We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Gary?
Here.
Dinko?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Shire?
Here.
Mayor Beattie.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't have any, mayor.
We have a closed session.
We won't be, could we had it last week? I'm sorry.
So we'll remove closed session from the agenda. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you have comment for council, please come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jason Rourke. I live on West Stanton Street here in Shreve.
Okay, reiterate again, sir.
My name is Jason Rourke.
Jason Rourke, okay.
R-R-K.
Thank you.
I live on Stanton Street. We have problems with neighbors parking along the street. They think they own the street. I have problems with teenagers driving dirt bikes, dirt four-wheelers. Their cars run really fast in the afternoon and mornings when kids are there at bus stops. I think something needs to be done. I mean, calling the police. Police said they don't have enough officers on duty to patrol the area. I swear to God, if somebody gets one of my kids, I'll take matters in my own hands and you guys ain't gonna like it. I want something done. I need something addressed now. I've been constantly called twice for my parents to figure out if I park on the side of the street on Stanton. And they say, move our car, put it in our driveway. What the problem is, cars that are parked in the site blocks over there, you know, if there's a car, matter of fact, a car right behind our driveway, we can't even park it on the wrong driveway. The neighbors are being pricks. They think they own everything. There's no way seems to be doing anything about it. I've been tired of constantly coming to my house bothering me for what they're yelling about. It's public property. You don't own the street. I went off on an officer this morning, got tired of it. And he wouldn't tell me what, who turned me, turned my mother's car in. It was anonymous. I called this accountant. I want to know who the person is. So I want to get rid of her harassment. If they ain't in harassment, glad it is. Common sense. I mean, I had enough. I'm about ready to stamp any minute now because of this prank. Tired of this. School buses can't get through. Guard guys can't get through. Emergency vehicles can't get through. You got, cars are piled up on the one side of the street, all the way down. And then you got problems on Bloomington Street. You got four cars on South Bloomington Street. Can't see around the corner to get across the street. And nobody's doing nothing about it. No police, no nothing. Why am I supposed to get killed in that corner? They're seriously hurt. You don't want to widen the streets. Enforce this stuff. You've got all these enforcers. They ain't doing nothing. Nope, I don't see a single car, single cop, nobody around that area. Mornings or afternoons, or weekends. My kids are outside every day, before and after school and on weekends.
It's 30 seconds remaining.
So I'm just trying to say something, you guys have said something work with the public. Before this gets too carried away. And no one's gonna have, neighbors are gonna really be pissed at me when they find out about this. They got driveways in their yard. They got garages. They can park off the street, hang their houses. There's all kinds of room. It just takes you guys to enforce it.
That's your three minutes, sir.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Are, this is West Stanton Street?
Yes, it is.
Is this east or west of Van Barren?
What is it? Is it east of Van Barren or west of Aitken?
The 300s or the 400s?
300s.
Okay, so it'll be on this side?
Corner of Van Barren and Granton, Stanton Street. But all the cars are parked on West Stanton Street, all the way down.
For what it's worth, I live in the area and I'll start taking that route as much as possible and just seeing if I can gather what's going on. Please, don't do anything today that you would regret tomorrow.
I'm not. I just wanted to let you guys know what's going on because apparently nobody else is doing anything. Cars are floating around that area all the time.
Well, I appreciate it. I can hear the frustration in your voice.
Yes, it is. I was frustrated this morning too. I tried to tow my mother's car this morning.
You're in the right place, so.
And I think you should put a sign that says, "No parking."
This here is a good way to advance your situation.
What it is for you is to save your safety for police, fire department, ambulance, trash guys, get through there, UPS drivers, all of them. I mean, like, a lot of you here need to do something.
Like I said, I'll do my best to start cruising through the area and see if there's something I can see to help you.
I swear to God, there's a car that goes flying past Grant, from Grant Street to, or not Grant, Summer Street, on the other side of Summer Street, a little Volkswagen, little pink car, two teenagers. He's heading 75 mile an hour around that road. My kids are right there in the corner. They were a school bus. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming here and saying what you needed to say. Very appreciated.
Any other public comment?
Oh, I would like to be the last.
I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
My name is Fawri Fantasi. I've been here for eight years. Since the first days we moved here, we have been having a property dispute, threats, debt threats. They started to ask, okay. I don't know what to begin. Today, I request, just yesterday, General Governor Office, I filed a complaint in the past with the federal government regarding this situation. And they have all the records. I didn't file it, writing nothing. I'm just now writing, filing those to help the General Governor Office to investigate and also the federal government to start some investigation regarding not only debt threats, criminal activity from this drug dealer, and some other issues that are literally everything related one to another. Things don't get better. I tried to petition the city. If I can get a job with the city and the police board would be great. There are a lot of things that I cannot do because I'm not authorized to do what I see. I used to work undercover officer back in Europe. I've been on military foot for training for a while. So I've been having the very good proper training to do many things, but some probably officers don't know. They are new. They are, I don't know, because I've seen some things very old to me. And former chief of police, Mr. Pasteryk, and former mayor, Landford, they, right now, they enjoy that patient, but they leave some, behind some problems. And I spoke with them on the time. The other time, I did the council here three, four times regarding those issues. Okay, and the city, I believe, the people, persons should not burden, have the burden to have a property dispute, especially when there are threats and debt threats. And I have some activity, I see some activity from the outdoors, which I cannot put in the state and the government to them because I'm sure they do some illegal activity. So if you don't even know who you're suing, I try to take this to civil court for some reason, some, some, and it's, I'm completely turned off when I see what's going on. It's like justice don't work for everybody. It's not equal justice for everybody and I need to point everything now, those complaints, to Governor Office, also the former Adam Kizinger.
You have 30 seconds left.
He knows about this issue. I didn't want to file complaint with his office on the time. I'm looking at which representative he is, from Senate and Congress, sent him a letter of complaint. So everything, it's not like, if somebody come to threaten my life and my family or the community of this guy he did in the past, or anybody else, I have to do action on my own based on the fact police came to my address more than 50 times on my calls and neighbors and the tenants, this guy, this guy, whether. So based on that, I have to do, to seek for justice on my own and then call the police. Protect the community. Thank you very much. If somebody want to offer, please contact me. I do volunteer work in town since I moved. Okay, a lot of volunteer I did in this town, day, night, matter. I'm the guy.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm sorry for the issue you're having. Does anyone know, is there anything on file that you submitted to the city?
The gentleman here presently knows it is a first threat. He was right on the property, the threat stuff.
If you don't mind getting some details on that. Much appreciated.
I didn't want to pursue with the staff and I'm very upset because I sent something to the state attorney, to the other chief of police. They sent it to the state attorney and I've been told by the feds, someone in the state attorney office also could be, they don't pursue that criminal activity during the pandemic. They probably they are implicated on this. So they're gonna look, somebody gonna, not me, they're gonna look into who's behind and cover this criminal.
Well, like Mr. Rourke, you came to the right place, did the right thing. So I appreciate your situation. Thank you very much.
I've been meeting several times with other mayor, Mr. Landford and Chief Pasteryk. Not much was done, I'm sorry to say. I'm sure they enjoyed their patient, but those problem are, the other day, my wife, we wanted to move. We are ready to move, so about on everything. They could go to court, all parties implied. But I don't want to do that. I wanted to take the bad people to court and file the complaint with proper authority. So we look into this.
Thank you. So I will, I will take what, I will, sir.
Those kids are all with this ATV. Somebody gonna die one day. He's very correct. I called police dozen times on those.
I appreciate your situation and we're gonna have a little look into this and see if we can figure out what's going on if there's a way to get you some help.
I called the police. Let me stop them and drag them to court if police can do nothing. Somebody gonna die one day. They're gonna kill. Forty, sixty, fifty, sixty miles per hour, have them a video. They passed through my street there and woman, if she wouldn't put to her kids, this guy with ATV, no lights, run them over. I was really, I didn't have my.
Sir, we need to finish our meeting now. The three minutes are up.
Thank you for your time.
People are upset about this.
You've had your three minutes.
Hiring police, please, and I will show you how this is worked. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Those need to be addressed and more than three minutes, you guys can do that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? If not, we will go into the action items. Item one is ordinance 202545. Ordinance amending Chapter 3.54 of the Schrader Municipal Code to amend the mall municipal grocery tax for City of Schrader. A sound levies in Calhoun, Illinois. Can you get a motion and a second, please?
Sub moved.
A second?
Okay, Mr. Reed with the motion and Mr. Dinko with the second. Go into discussion.
Well, this is just a technical correction to an ordinance that was adopted earlier this year. It mandates 1% sales tax on grocery sales within the city limits of Schrader.
Any questions on this or just to get us just changing?
It's just a correction that the Department of Revenue requested cities make that, who adopted the law code that we presented to us.
It's just a technical question.
It's just a technical, I don't, I don't know if it was a trade lawyer, but it's.
It's a sentence only a lawyer could love. Any comment or question? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Dinko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Here.
Aye. Item 2, Resolution 202546, authorizing and approving the levy of an additional 0.02% on real property within the City of Schrader pursuant to 75 ILCS 5/3-1 for the fiscal year beginning 1/1/26 and ending 12/31/2026.
This is an annual.
Okay, so motion and second. Yeah, sorry.
Sub moved. Somebody else.
Okay, Mr. Dinko with the motion and Mr. Gary with the second. And now with discussion.
I understand all the city councils obligated to approve the tax. I'll be approved by the library board. So this is just an annual obligation, if you will. And tonight, according to, it's the current year levy request for the additional tax of 0.2%. Doesn't necessarily increase overall because the other levy that you'll be adopting is another part of the library levy and the library will stay within 4.99%.
So this is.
It's just in the.
It's every year we have to do, in annual record keeping, that we have to pass every year and have been doing so for a long time. And it's for.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, repairs, and alterations of the library. And this is the maximum rate under.
But what it adds, it lowers the other request, so it stays at 4.99%.
Any other comment or question? Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Dinko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
I'll abstain.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie.
Aye. Item 3, motion to approve the meeting and holiday schedule for the calendar year 2026. Can you get a motion and second, please?
Sub moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Gary with the motion and Mr. Reed with the second. Any discussion?
Well, state law requires the city council adopt a schedule, being scheduled. You can, throughout the year, make changes to it and start the year with the publication schedule.
And really, the only change was moving Carol back to the first Wednesday of the month, that's starting in January.
That'll bring the conference when we can have.
With play conditions.
Back to back.
Yeah.
Any other comment or question? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Dinko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie.
Aye. Next item is the consent agenda. You get a motion and second to pace the consent agenda with a fund worth a total of $2,038,210.18. This will also approve council meeting minutes from October 14th and October 15th, 2025, and the financial reports for the month of October, 2025.
Sub moved.
Second. Okay, Mr. Gary with a motion and Mr. Dinko with a second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Dinko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie.
Aye. And we'll go into unfinished business, which is our 2026 tax levy and budget discussion.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay. So I present to you tonight two tax levies as well as a spreadsheet, you know, the general fund. After our meeting last week, Steve Leto and I spent time going through the budget pretty closely, focusing mainly on the general fund, but we also looked at the other funds. And there was a comment, the.
Probably by me.
Yeah, at the end about coming up with another tax levy alternative that would reduce the tax levy below the 4.99% that Seth had recommended. It eliminated the portion of the general fund, the portion of the levy that would provide monies in excess of the pension obligations and prior year levels. So that's, that's all going to be, that would strip funds of $4,000 from the general fund if we were to do that. So let me just walk through the Excel spreadsheet.
I don't think your laptop is on, Dave.
Hmm?
I don't think your laptop is on.
I'm sorry about that. So on the original budget report, if you have it tonight, that was published on November 2nd, 2025, it showed a deficit in the general fund of $1,703,485. And so I first looked at what can we do to reduce expenses. And I have a list here and I'll walk through each one. The fire department recommended $130,000 for a building project that will refer to our training center. If we take that out, that would reduce our deficit to $1,604,085. It also requested $40,000 per vehicle purchase for mainly to eliminate the mileage reimbursement. That's something that we might look at doing through other means, but I was just simply initially going through, looking at our capital items, things that we could pull out. And so if we remove that from the budget, also remove the $350,000 ambulance purchase. Now, we may need to order an ambulance, but it's not likely that it would be delivered in an upcoming year. So we can remove the expense from the budget. But we do come up with a plan for paying for it, when ultimately it's delivered. Just like we ordered a fire truck and we have a plan. It could be our plan is that we'll finance it at the same time we fire, finance the fire, the fire truck. We're using this today. There was a vehicle squad car recommendation. There were two vehicles in the police department. I took the squad car out because I think we have sufficient drug fund money available to make that purchase if we, if we need to do that. There was $145,000 in the, in the budget for replacing the city hall generator. That thing is not working. It's not cost effective to try to repair it. We absolutely need to have a generator for this building. If we have a regional, long-term power outage, we can't operate the police department building. That's where our chaos cells are at and we need to be able to fully operate this building. I mean, we can go a couple of days not operating maybe administrative office and utility building, but the police department is really an essential function for the city. We need to be able to provide for continuing operations. As an alternative to using general fund, I checked with our TIF attorney, her client, and he says that since the building is in the TIF district, it would be eligible to use TIF proceeds to fund that purchase. So if the council would be agreeable to that, we can take that $145,000 and add it to our TIF district. And that'd be the TIF district that we formed, I believe, with the Vactor project. He came up, include this building as well as the incubator. And it's, that district is actually doing better financially than we had originally estimated. I took $5,000 out of the tree budget for two tree purchases, not eliminating it, just cutting it in half. I reduced $5,000 for gas oil within the public works department. I took $100,000 out. That would fund a new shelter in one of our parks. I deleted the grader at $150,000. I deleted a pickup truck in the public works budget. And I deleted $50,000 for the neither building that was being funded out of the general fund. We do have, I think, about half million or so in the home rule sales tax fund that is also, was allocated to be spent, but I'm going to be recommending we remove it from both funds in order to free up money later. I have EMS billing. That's a revenue line. And we look closely at our revenues. We're doing as well as we originally budgeted when we created the program. And it's a little difficult to be completely assured that we're all right, but we're definitely covering our operational costs, maybe not all of our capital costs. But one of the unknowns is the amount of money that the state claws back. One of our major sources of revenue is money coming from the federal government. But the state, actually, it comes to us directly and then the state bills us. It's what it deals, it's shared for a service that is actually funded and provided by the taxpayers of Schrader. I think we had to pay the state a couple hundred thousand dollars. When was that? About a month or two ago? Yeah, like 200, over $200,000 to be getting ready to check out of our general fund to ensure that GMP payment coming from the federal government that was intended to support EMS services. Water utility tax, I think we can bump that revenue line, $15,000. Video gaming, we can bump that line up, $15,000. We have $600 budgeted for carnival permits, but in the last year or two, we've waived the permit requirement for Schrader Fest and I think Pluto Fest. There's no point, it's only $600, but there's no point in budgeting for a revenue that we're just gonna waive in the year. So I took that out. So we get to the bottom line. How do I fund a essentially $500,000 deficit? Now, we still included all the capital items that I did not talk about, so I'm not removing everything. There are some capital that's still in the budget, but most of it is removed. We did underestimate our personnel costs in the community development department. So we took another look at that and we're about $100,000 short. So I need to add $100,000 just to cover that payment. And that, that department is often, they're largely funded with a home rule sales tax. After I do that, then I still have a deficit that I need to fund and of about $410,000. So we have the money in the fund by stripping the neither building that we had budgeted about half a million dollars to fund for this year. So if we don't do that project this year, we'll be all right. Well, the neither building, we were using not only incoming revenue, the sales taxes that floated to the fund, but about, I think, $200,000 or so of reserves, which were saved up for, to be spent on capital items. And so we'll be dipping a little bit into our home rule sales tax fund, which are due through this year. But I think our first obligation is making the pension payments and funding current operations. I have two notes down here, actually three that I did type because I talked to the mayor. I tried to prepare this sheet, print 15, 20 copies. The first is the fire department asked for a deputy fire chief position, although I think would be a good thing for the department to have that position for all the reasons that they stated. It was not included in the personnel costs for that department when, in the November 2nd report. So I didn't remove it, but it was ever in it to begin with. And so we're not funding that position. In addition, I didn't include in, in the general fund, a pickup block court that the council and the park board would like to build a Mariner Park. And her client, our attorney, suggested that it would be an eligible cause for the TIF district. So if we could fund it.
Are we gonna apply for an alternate grant for that?
Well, we can try to do that, but if we have to fund it locally, it would be a TIF eligible expense.
Yeah, that'd be a good backup using the TIF, but.
Right.
So. That's a good grant, would be great.
You just can't depend on getting it.
Yeah, that's hidden there, sir.
Yeah, and there is demand for the, for that. City doesn't offer that anywhere. So if the council was agreeable, I would have to make adjustments to the home rule sales tax budget as well as the TIF budgets to accommodate the changes that I suggested tonight. The last is on the property tax levy. We're gonna have to publish this budget. Now, you can lower, you can reduce your levy, you can reduce your budget, but you can't increase it after we publish it. And so just, just to note that if you want to add something, really, it needs to come up now. But, so the original sheet showed a 4.99% increase, which is, just avoids another public hearing. And that generated, in addition to paying everything we've had been paying and meeting our current pension obligations, it generated $64,000 of additional revenue. We did not change the revenue expense or line items in the general fund to accommodate that additional $64,000. So, if you were to go to, with the 499, I would add, I would increase the general fund revenue by that amount. But then I would also recommend we buy a pickup truck for public works. Their fleet is really old and they need to have reliable vehicles, particularly in the summer months when they have the summer crews. We have enough vehicles to get everywhere, get everyone where they need to be during work day. But if we can't afford it, we can't afford it. So, if you want to reduce the, that's the second sheet. If you, if you take that $64,000 out, that would reduce the increase to 3.59%. And we just wouldn't buy that pickup truck, that would be my recommendation. So, I took the pickup truck out and we could add it back in if you want to go with the 499 because that would provide for the revenue to support that payment. And the third item, and it would have to be funded with reserves in the home rule sales tax fund, which we would add. And that's, we've been looking at replacing downtown cameras. Our current camera arrangements, we have a lot of maintenance issues and they're probably, are definitely an end of life. And so, we've been working with a new consultant. So, we might, if you guys were comfortable, I would add some money in the home rule sales tax fund to make that purchase later. If you chose to do it, it would definitely come out of fund balance, not current revenue, but we give you the opportunity to do that later on. Actually, all capital decision, purchase decisions come back to council before they're made, you know, throughout the year, even if it's in the budget.
Well, I, I think the cameras are important. You know, considering what happened last Easter downtown, I think the more cameras, we had an incident in the city park yesterday or last night, some damage to the light up street or stuff. So, I don't see how we can afford not to add whatever we have to, to get cameras. Just my opinion.
Did we get a budget on that?
Jeremy, do we have a cost?
We booked that.
It can be whatever we want it to be.
It needs to be robust.
Whatever money we have available, we could, we can.
Yeah, I think part of the issue we have is the way the cameras further out communicate back and get that information back to the city hall using a Wi-Fi radio frequency system. And when one of the legs fails to work, then it stops everything upstream.
I know, I'd like to look at making sure that those are all working and scheduling some replacements as well as just parks. Do we have any, and it could be a multi-year plan, but we at least start working that way as far as covering. Because I know there's cameras in city park, but it doesn't cover every square inch.
Yeah, and we're going to be making a bigger investment over in Corolla.
Yeah, and that would be nice to have our camera too.
For Corolla, with the exception of the shelter that I pulled out. But, you know, that's maybe a little bit more difficult technically to get the signal back to city hall, but.
Excuse me, if they need help, these towns, I might volunteer, just, yeah, I can help with that.
So, tonight, what I would like from council, some direction on the levy amount, whether or not it should be 499 or 259. Whether or not, if you do go with the 499, whether or not I can include the pickup truck back in the budget. And whether or not I can make the adjustments to the TIF fund and the home rule tax fund to take care of the cameras as well as the pickup park. And then anything else you guys might have in terms of changes?
Well, I've been planning on 499 the whole time. I didn't realize, you know, there was going to be another option. And so, I'd say stay with the 499 and get the pickup truck. It's still under the threshold of having to go through the public hearings and, and all those extra steps, so. That's what I'm thinking.
And that, even going with 499, that brings down our tax rate from last year also.
Right, and, and this was an issue that was, I understand, discussed last night in the school, high school board meeting. We received a fairly, Streeter received a fairly significant increase in the sets value. But that wasn't, that increase wasn't necessarily due to new construction. It was largely, I think, due to just increasing property values, which is a good thing. But that doesn't mean everybody who lives in town has 15% more income or even though our EAD went up 15%. And so, I think the challenge for local government is just because we are legally authorized to levy more, you know, it's fair to the taxpayer to exercise that authority. Every unit in the government has to make that own decision. We're still at, trying to keep the, the levy as low as we can. There are some years back that city council, I think, froze, it was before my time, froze the levy. But what that did was kind of built up an unfunded liability in the pension funds that had pushed the pain forward. And we're still paying for that now. And so, our levies today are higher than they would probably need to be if the pensions were better funded. Because two-thirds of our levy for pension goes to the unfunded portion of pension application back to our council. That's what the vote reported, you know, for the last meeting. So, I would caution you to just kick the can down the road. We've made progress in the underfunding and still have a long way to go. But the whole budget keeps staffing at current levels. And I think, given circumstances, that's the best we really can do. The items that the departments asked for were all very reasonable. One of the challenges I have, unlike some of the other cities I've worked at, is departments are very disciplined here because they know that we are tight financially. So, I don't get a lot of the off, off-the-wall requests or they don't intentionally over-budget line items, you know, feel historical trend. I don't see, the culture here in Streeter is very healthy among the departments. They don't rush, they don't increase their purchasing, they just spend money because we're approaching the end of the year. I haven't seen that here. The way to really develop that culture is to, if they under-spun an account, cut that fund back. And then, and then you, you train your staff to just make sure everything's spent. That doesn't happen here. That doesn't mean that we don't overspend, in some accounts we do. But the budget, the budgeting and purchasing, you know, the accounting is all honest, I mean, it's attributed to the right fund. So, it's, it's really easy for us to look at the historical trending for both expenses and for revenues. We had to be careful about our sales tax. We've had a growth of sales taxes, but now we've had a closure of a major auto dealer and so we've anticipated some of that. It's difficult to know exactly where, where we'll land, but I think we're not purposely over-estimating our revenues to make the expenses less, you know, food items, trying to be honest. If you look at our past couple of years, we've actually underestimated some of our sales taxes to our benefit. We also, at the same time, we underestimated the sales taxes, we overestimated use taxes because I think there was a shift in the state that made some use tax and called them sales taxes when they started taxing internet sales. But the net still increased beyond what we had originally expected.
And when do we have to post this? Do we have to put a legal notice out?
Yeah, we really, like, like I said, I would prefer posting it immediately. And then if you want to make reductions later, you can do that. So, if you're going to err, err in the side of adding expenses in here that you may not feel particularly comfortable with, but just budget for it. You don't have to spend it as you go through the year, but you can add it later after publication.
So, and we do need to announce the tax levy yet tonight.
Right.
So, we can always, if we say it's 4.99 increase, we can always decrease it.
Yes.
But we can't increase it. So, if we think of something, first meeting next month, we can't say, oh, we wish we would have added a little higher. So, we, I would suggest we put it at the 4.99 and then officially come down from that if we want to do that. But I think that's a better, yeah, I think that's a better way to do it, just.
Agreed.
You can post as is on decrease.
Yep. I, you know, I, I think in the years that I've served, three-year focus here has always been the actual levy amount, not necessarily the tax rate. You'll, you'll see communities. I read an article about another community in South County taking advantage of an EAD increase, I think it was less than ours. And their, and their argument was, well, let's maintain the tax rate, it's our money. And we're not doing that. The rate, we're looking at the overall.
The rate's going to drop.
Yeah, the rate is going to drop. With the growth of the EAD, everything that's associated with that, your body authority also increases. But that doesn't necessarily mean people can afford the taxes to repay the bodies.
I happen to represent a number of townships, Eagle, Honor Creek, and Cruz, and they've all announced their tax levies. They've gone with the 4.99% increase, I think, across the board, and all of their tax rates are going to come down too. So, other taxi bodies are going to be helping the taxpayers as well.
Well, not hurting.
Not hurting.
The taxes, right.
But their rates are going down.
The rate are going down, but the amount, unless there was, their neighbors' property went up in value and they stayed the same, they're going to pay.
Yeah, I think Cruz is going down 4.99, but I think the other state, but I think Cruz is, is running down, I think about that some more.
Yeah, you know, Streeter's story though is the underfunding of these fire patients and it just consumes your taxes. And it just removes resources for the current council that gets elected and want to do things and build projects, that's what the community wants. I read Facebook like you guys and it's all, hey, let's build this, let's do that. It's like, well, yeah, but you're paying for a fire department from 20 years ago, or a place park from 20 years ago.
If we kept, I'm not suggesting this, but just I looked at if we kept the rate the same on page one, that 4.4 million would go to 5.3. So, that's the difference that limiting to the 4.99 and reducing the rate makes. As our current tax rate times the new EAD. Make difference.
Yeah.
And we could find something to do with that money if we had.
Oh, and what, no sign.
But it would put a hardship on everybody and we don't want to do that. Well, I mean, the needs, you know, we're not budgeting for significant sidewalk projects, there's all sorts of needs now that we have. Yeah, we're just kind of moving along, just putting the basics here.
So, what else did you need direction with?
I need your general consensus. So, is, am I hearing, let me just state, am I hearing consensus to proceed with advertising a 499? Also, yes, a notice, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, am I also hearing support to modify our budget documents to reflect the recommendations I made you tonight in terms of the cuts? As well as the, the transfers from the home rule sales tax fund, adding to the TIF budgets for the items that I mentioned? Am I hearing that?
Yep.
Put that into the budget? All right, well, what I'll do is I'll have the budget documents updated to reflect that and we'll go ahead and make the required notices. And I think it returns to council at December 9th meeting?
Summer 9th or summer 19th.
Just a calendar meeting?
Yeah, but we're likely going to hold a special meeting that night. So, I would prefer having it heard by council as soon as you can because if you're not ready to make the decision that night, you could always, you're, you don't want to be, a couple of years ago, they wanted to make changes a little too late and.
I'm still processing a couple of them. Like the neither building is just.
The need?
It's terrible, so that was one where I'm, I hate to see it cut, but.
Well, I agree. Public Works has operated out of, from my view, a substandard facility for probably the last 50 years.
Probably 60.
Need 60?
It was an old greenhouse over there.
Right, but unfortunately, I think the scale of this project is such that you're, you're likely to utilize debt to fund the improvements. One of the difficulties we have is we funded $2 million out of our sewer fund to make a, funded two-thirds of our $3 million project using fund downs. And that's reduced significantly the amount in our cash flow. Right, well, it reduced the depreciation, you can't run close to zero again. And so, in our current budget, we're budgeting for $250,000 to go to depreciation as well as $100,000 for additional equipment. That's a pretty good capital hit. If some of that money, you know, was available because Public Works is at least half sewer, it could really offset the burden on, on the general taxpayer through the home rule sales tax fund or the general fund. I don't think that we can do that. This year, we really, I accept Jeremy's recommendation to put some, borrow some money aside for the sewer fund. In two or three years, maybe you'll feel a little bit more comfortable and maybe take some of that, and maybe some of that money, like the $250,000 transfer in year three, and just extend that period of refunding, refunding that, because we're doing that based on the council policy and take some of that money applying to our neither building. Or you can go out and borrow the money because you'll have the James Street Park Anderson Field Clubhouse bond repaid in 2027. So, in tax year 2028, monies will be available if you can issue new debt. And I, but I can, that's how I'm expecting the city will fund the million dollars for the fire truck. But there should be additional monies available. One of the, one of the recommendations I made to the mayor, I'm talking, I'm going to be retiring in the next couple of months. I haven't submitted anything formally, but just giving general advice to staff and the mayor. The city would be in better shape if we had debt every two or three years coming offline. So, they, in the time that I've been here, we have, we're just paying off debt, that was in three years ago. And so, I have really nothing available to fund capital through debt. I have to fund it through operations or reserves. And it's a particularly challenging thing to do. So, as you think about capital planning going forward, maybe scale down the amount of debt you issued in the first year and maybe two years later, three years later, do another round. Just kind of space your project so that in 10 years, the council then will have the opportunity to continue on at some level, spending money on capital as opposed to consuming the debt or more worth of resources in a very short period of time. It's really not fair to the future councils and that's what we fight ourselves in today. The other, I think, long-term trend is the use of the Home World Sales Tax Fund to support operations. I've mentioned this to Jeremy because it's going to affect our capital planning. When that referendum passed that allowed for the non-Home World Sales Tax, it was, I think, largely intended at the time to fund capital projects. And it has been doing that over the years. But sales taxes, a general form of revenue, those, the, we, from a annual budgeting perspective, we track that separately, but when you look at the audit, the money gets rolled into the general fund. It's a general revenue source because it comes from the community at large. And generally, those monies, using more general language, can be used to support, you know, the public safety type operations and general administration. And so as the cost for public safety increases beyond the rate of growth of our revenues, we're going to have to utilize Home World Sales Tax to fund operations. We're beginning to do that with this budget. I've avoided having to do that in the past, but I think we're at the point where, I don't think we can stomach a reduction in size for our police department. And we really can't manage many changes in the fire department at this point in time given all the work that they do with A M S, fire suppression. So your capital budget will be diminished over the next decade. That's the point I'm making. There'll be less street projects. Some money has been diverted to occasional sewer client projects. About a half million goes to fund the debt service on the Penn Street project. And that will continue for another decade. So after that project is funded, there'll be a plus of monies available to the city ten years out that can be spent for the general fund or other capital projects. Am I confusing you guys?
Nope.
So that's, I think, that's the trend that I just want to, when I look at, when I do budgeting, I'm always thinking, what am I going to do next year, the year following? Where are we headed? So I will, we'll make the adjustments to all the budget documents accordingly. And we'll present it to council on the night. And we'll make, we'll see if council can approve it that night. If not, it'll be at the second meeting in December.
And so we're clear on the minutes. The minutes will reflect that council announced the tax levy at that amount.
At four-nine-nine.
Okay, very good.
Is that what we have to announce? Is the percentage of the increase or the dollar amount?
Well, I think all one.
Yeah, but just which way you announce it? Okay. So it's the request we have to announce.
Right, and if there's anything, anything you feel strongly about, what do you know in the next two weeks or by December? So we're ready for the December ninth meeting?
Well, what I'd like to be, you know, if you wanted to add something and I had to ship money around, maybe this isn't your priority, but that is, then I can have another budget document and in order to install that, that could be ready to reflect that. If you, if that's what council wants to do that night as opposed to not being able to adopt a budget on the night, I'd like to be able to do that if at all possible. Because after that occurs, we still have to file it with both counties and there's, I mean, the federal state. There's a lot of admin work after the council approves it. And then we have holidays. I'd like to get it in before the absolute devil.
I know we have just the general categories, but would it help council to have a list of all capital? So you can see what's being put in the budget and what is being stripped out? Is that what you, or can you read this enough?
I think what they provide has been.
Yeah.
We know, we know what the requests were. We went through it line by line last meeting and we know what he's taken out, so.
I feel confident with the information that I've been provided.
Yep. I mean, all the personnel, the budget in most departments are all personnel related. And the department heads don't do that calculation. Steve Littleville does that using the spreadsheets that he has available. Another community that's one I didn't have, Steve Littleville, particularly when I was in Iowa. I did that. I had overlapping Excel spreadsheets. I keep track of all of those. But he does a great job. I don't feel the need to try to duplicate that. And he does a tax levy exactly the same way I presented it. It was amazing when I saw his spreadsheet go in. So, yeah, so I'll work for Steve. He did the paperwork in order. And, yeah, Steve, for the new, he's part of an accounting firm, Waterbike, and he meant that we hired, we contracted the firm, costs is, I think, roughly about sixty grand a year. And they do the high-level accounting, all payroll and the other stuff. But the high-level internal entry is just keeping track of things. Again, a great resource. We couldn't enforce that handle on a full-time basis here at the firm. Podiac, I went through a change of management and they ended up with Waterbike too. So actually following my recommendation. And, yeah, they give us in many cities. For smaller cities like us, it's a great arrangement.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Any other comments or questions on levy and budget for tonight? And we'll go to city official comments.
Light Up Streeter next week, coming up fast, so support it. Support whatever tickets you can afford to buy because that's what makes it happen. Thank you to everybody that works out there in the cold to make it happen.
What he said.
Sit up?
Yeah, sit up.
He's done the majority of this year.
Did he?
Yeah.
Kudos, kudos to Mr. Danko.
Yes, absolutely.
Non-tile, Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity though.
Now, Light Up Streeter in the lineup parade in markets. And then I'd also encourage everybody to shop small next Saturday. If there's a lack to offer. There's, so one more note. For the America Two-Fifty, they are requesting items for a time capsule. And they are due to Springfield by December thirty-first. So if there's anything that you can think of that we would want to put in a time capsule to be opened to get the America Three Hundred?
Are you looking for something that reflects today, so fifty years from now when they open it up? They say, I can't believe that's how crude the cell phones were back then.
EJ, EJ, volunteer to go in the capsule? Drinks that he would.
We have a lot of stuff in the basement.
We can put a picture of EJ in there.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we can't afford to lose them in the community.
But we have a lot of stuff at the museum that is just in storage that might be of interest. We, things we have duplicates of. I'll see what Mary Lou will part with.
She'll part with.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if you think of something, we have another two meetings prior. Anything from the table room? I will request a motion on second to adjourn.
Second?
Okay, motion by Mr. Geary and second by Mr. Reed. Call the rule, please.
Danko?
Aye.
Geary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.